...these parcels, the Richards have been paying real estate taxes on it for a long time. So, the people that conveyed the deeds thought they owned it and Richards thought they bought it. The taxing authorities think they own it because they're paying taxes on it. And all we're asking you to do is to recognize, I think, what has historically been the fact, which is that this is part and parcel of their business and for this local business to maintain its viability. This action is now necessary to formalize what has been informally recognized for years.
All right. With that, we will open to open the floor for public testimony. Again, if you'd please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and if you keep your comments within five minutes, that would be helpful.
Hi. My name is Drew Hansken, 720 Henry Street in Lebanon. I've been an employee, a part-time employee at Lebanon's Milky Way for about four years now. I'm a stay-at-home dad. They've been very, you know, nice enough to allow me to come in and work a couple of days a week just to kind of, you know, keep my sanity, I guess, during the day. But when this came about, one thing that I've noticed over the four years that I've worked there is the amount of traffic that comes through our lot. It's not a real big parking lot. Right now, employees are parking in what I guess would be considered the alleyway. If that's vacated, we now have to move to somewhere else to find a place to park. Drive by the restaurant on a Saturday at 12:30, 1 o'clock in the afternoon. Take a look how busy that parking lot is. There's nowhere else to park. Every lot is full. We have families who use the picnic area in the back. They walk through that parking lot. We have kids who ride their bicycles through that parking lot to get to the business. And I'm concerned about the safety of the people walking and the people trying to use the picnic area if we open that up. If we're trying to open this up to try to make it easier to get onto Indianapolis Avenue, it's not going to happen. That's a hard road to pull out onto no matter where you're at on that street. All it's going to do is open up more traffic. There's going to be cars going back behind that alley. They have no business even going back there. And I'm concerned about the safety of the people who are walking to their cars, to the picnic area, to the kids who are riding their bicycles. For the employees at night that have to go out to their car in the dark or go out to the dumpster to take trash, shouldn't have to walk to our parking lot and be wondering if we're going to, you know, another car coming through. We have enough, we have enough traffic through there as it is. So, that's just one thing that's just kind of concerned me. I noticed this Saturday when I was working, I was looking outside and how busy we were. And I'm like, there's no way that we can, you know, fit any more cars in here. And that's just one of the things, I, you know, the business has been running for a long, long time. It's been sitting like that for a very, very long time, and I don't see the need to change anything right now. Especially on the fact that, you know, some of the paperwork that's been put out that, you know, they've been paying taxes on it. They have clear trees, they have laid gravel, they have repaved the parking lot, they've added speed bumps. And if it's decided not to vacate that, do they get compensated for all that? Who reimburses them for all the money that they've spent, all the time and the work that they've put in to making this building? And, I mean, that's, this is their life. This is what they do. So, I'm just concerned about vacating it and, you know, if the parking lot is already too full because we had to take away parking spaces, people aren't going to stick around, they're going to leave, and it could hurt business. And we want to support local family-owned businesses, so I'm just asking you to do the right thing. Thank you.
So, just to clarify, you are speaking in favor of the ordinance to pass the ordinance to vacate the property?
To vacate the property, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Next.
Yeah. My name is Dan Allen. I live at 710 Indianapolis Avenue. I just received this last little thing here from the Planning Commission that, about a plot stating that as of 5/31/15, that it already shows that they own it. Where's this been for 19 months when all this has been going on? We've been in this thing since last November. It mysteriously shows up and shows revised dates of January, February, and March of 2016. Convenient. Right when everything was reversed and sent back to the Planning Commission, all of a sudden this mysteriously shows up. I lived at that-
Just to clarify, what are you, what are you, what are you talking about? What do you, what do you mean?
This piece of paper that was sent to me by certified of a boundary survey. And conveniently, it's on two different plot books. It's on Book Two, Page 126, 127, but everything that concerns the property that we're suggesting is in Book Two, 29, Page 21. How can there be two plot books for the same exact piece of property? In your vast extension, you guys, they said they researched this clear back to 65 and found nothing that showed that they owned it. Mysteriously, 10 days before this meeting, I've got a piece of paper here saying that it was done in 2015 and revised the last three months.
I'm sure Derek could speak to that if we, if that's-
So, that, that really surprises me where this has been since all this argument's been going on since, you know, they've had the street blocked off for 19 months now. I've lived at that address since 1996. There's four people, and one of them is their house that used that alleyway. As much goes out of their parking lot through my driveway, out beside my house, is whatever went the other way. So, and if he's worried about security at night, they can put up a light in the back to light their parking lot so they can be seen. My question is, is to anybody else here, if the roles were reversed, would you be fighting as hard to save your alleyway or your street? How would you, anybody here, like to have the street they lived on blocked off so only one way in, one way out? Would you not be fighting as hard to keep that open for the three or four individuals that go through there that actually live on that street? I mean, it was fine until 19 months ago, and all of a sudden it was a major current deal. Why? And why is it now they have to have all this property? I say, give them Green Street, but let us go out that way. The four or five people that live on that alley, it's been that way for 100 years? Now, all of a sudden, it's a major problem? Nothing in their records show, I mean, yes, he has deeds, but nothing according to your officials is on the records, but all of a sudden, here it is. It really, I have to question all this. You know, I sympathize with the small business. My father was a small businessman his entire life, but they complained that the city was picking on them because they were a small business. How come now the business gets to pick on the individual? Is it the trickle-down effect? If I was a big business, had 200 employees, would it go in my favor? Because I'm supplying more jobs. I need a bigger parking lot. If it's worked fine for all this time and we cohered for the last 20-some years, why is it such a major ordeal now? There's been no more houses, the traffic has actually decreased because now the trucking company that was behind us is no longer there. So, they're not coming in and out with their big dump trucks and excavators and all this other stuff. So, it's down to four or five cars. So, why has it been such a big deal? That they say there's enormous amounts of traffic going through there? There hasn't been. I've lived there for 20-some years. No one else has, other than they have owned the business. I've lived there the longest. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Dan. Derek, could you speak to what he was making a comment on when it comes to the plat?
You know, the reason this was at the Planning Commission, came to the council, went back to the Planning Commission is, when I inherited this back in the first of January, and after the first Planning Commission meeting, we recognized that there were some holes in the research, no doubt. So, that's why we did send it back. And the revisions that you see in this survey, the original field work was done on 3/21/15. The, the original survey from that time was produced on 5/31/15. And the revisions were because of those things that we noticed, that this was an incomplete research when we originally had it. So, we added work to the surveyor, and she just noted that when we asked her to survey more of the subdivision. So, that, that's why that's noted on there. And as far as the plat book goes, unless I'm missing something, I see everything was in Plat Book Two on Pages 126 and 127. So, it was on two different pages, which is not uncommon. But if he wants to come up here and point it out to me where he's seen that it was on two different plat books.
You can read right there in the file. It says, "Received deed book plat 226, page 116."
That was likely because of when, when that deed was recorded from the vacation, and that would have been a separate action from this original plat.
I mean, up in here, it's still showing on this drawing that these three lots are-
Is there any way we can get that on the projector?
We can't see what's going on. So, if you could put it on the projector there, I'd like to see it.
Mr. Allen is pointing out that on Green Street, it's called out in a different deed book. And again, that was likely because of the vacation of that, and when it became a recorded deed, was a different time than the original plat for the subdivision, which is Plat Book Two, Pages 126 and 127.
Okay. Thank you, Derek. Next up.
Hey. My name is Trina Dean. I just bought the house at 716 Indianapolis Avenue. Okay, when, um-
Can you make sure you speak into the microphone?
Need to move it over?
Yep, there you go.
Okay. There is a manhole right inside the driveway. My son has a low car. He can't even come in that alley to get to my driveway. So, he can't come in the other way because there is no other way. I can't fix the manhole, however. It's not my property. It's the city's, but it's still there. That's one thing. The cars all use my driveway. They're not used to having anybody living in that house, and there hasn't been for a while. So, everybody uses my driveway for a turnaround. I have a 19-month-old granddaughter, and this alley that comes through, you were talking about being safe. Try to watch your little 19-month-old granddaughter out there when cars go in, when there's like four or five cars that come from the apartment house next door. One day, I was coming in from Indianapolis Avenue. One guy was coming out. He ran up in my yard, almost hit my house. The driveway from my house, from the alley, from my house to the alley, is probably not even this much yard. My house is where this gentleman is sitting. And this is the alley that comes from Indianapolis Avenue. Everybody uses that for a turnaround. Even the people who came and did the potholes, they filled in the potholes, they use all that for a turnaround. If any, any vehicle of any size comes in there, they have to use that. I'm going to block my driveway off. I'm going to fence it off. Then what? They're not going to have a place to turn around. But you know what? It's mine. I'm going to block it off. I don't really care that they use it to turn around if they watch and be careful. The point is, this is seven days a week, not one day, not just Saturday. This is seven days a week. I live there. Where I go to work, they have to rearrange how they do for their employees and where they work to do their business. I know what it's like to have a small business. My ex-husband and my son run Dean's Tree Service. So, I know how they have to park. They also have an alley that comes around like this. They can't close this one off. He owns the house right next to this alley, but he can't close that alley off. Other people could come in this way, but no, it's not right. It's not safe. I haven't, like I said, I have a 19-month-old granddaughter. She's the only grandchild that I have. You know, I just don't understand. Cars run up in my yard? Oh, and there was one more thing. If the people who live at 714 Indianapolis Avenue, if it's okay for them to have to come in from Green Street, why is their address Indianapolis Avenue? It should be Green Street if they have to come in on Green Street.
Is that, is that the building setback?
Yes.
The, I'm going to call it a barn just for lack of a better word?
Yeah.
Okay.
But see, why, if, if, if it's okay, and say it's okay for them to have to come in on Green Street because they run their own business, then why is it called Indianapolis Avenue? Why is their address Indianapolis Avenue?
Well, their, their mailbox likely faces Indianapolis Avenue, but by the looks of it, they installed the blockade to the alley.
Yeah.
So, that's why their access point would be to the rear.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying that they said last week, well, they have two accesses. That's not the point. Their address is Indianapolis Avenue. But I want this recorded, though, because if somebody hits my granddaughter turning around in my driveway because there is no other way to get in and out, I won't forget this.
Any further public comment?
Hello. My name is Wendy Sloman, and I live at 311 Turnberry Court here in Lebanon. And I'm here tonight to speak in support of the vacation which the Richards are asking for. I find it reasonable and right. In 1973, Lisa's father, Walt, retired after 30 years in the Navy, moved back home to Frankfurt. He bought the Frankfurt Milky Way in 78. He bought the Liston Dairy Bar, and in 1982, bought the Shepherd's Drive-In. In 1986, Lisa and her husband, Brian, wanted, who they wanted a year-round business, they purchased the Lebanon location from her parents. The Frankfurt location is now owned by Lisa's sister and her family. The Liston Dairy Bar was purchased by a longtime employee, okay? This property was purchased, indeed recorded, with Green Street plotted and vacated, but not only by the Richards, but also the previous owners, as has been stated in the previous meetings. As with any purchase, but especially land, we expect to get what we originally paid for, as stated, okay? They've paid taxes on it. They've maintained it. I was here last week, the last meeting, and I've heard the safety concerns, and I understand it. The Richards have placed a chain up to block the alley. This chain is movable for emergency personnel if needed to have access to the properties off the alley. These agencies have previously stated they would most likely use Indianapolis Avenue instead. The reasoning behind the chain was to protect the safety of employees and patrons of the Milky Way. This is a sound reason and a business practice. I've heard the neighbors' concerns. One of the last meetings and tonight was one way in and one way out. This is something that is no different on a dead-end street, a cul-de-sac like I live on, or even some of the new planned communities throughout the state of Indiana. The safety concern was brought up about the emergency personnel that would have to rely on Indianapolis Avenue and cause traffic issues. But how is this different when we have trash pickup, buses, and various different things like that? And then the other item that had been brought up was the decrease in property value. Since this has actually been part of the deeds for many, many years, I'm confused as how this would decrease the value of the neighboring properties. The Milky Way is a small business that the Richards family has worked hard on building as being an important part of Lebanon. They support many endeavors and are good stewards in this community. In a time where we are trying to entice people to use local businesses, I don't believe the council should do something that jeopardizes this business. I've always been a big supporter of local and small businesses. And in fact, when I moved here over 10 years ago, my family and I were determined to be supportive of our community and purchase as much as we possibly could from local businesses, which could be Ellis Jewelers, Cowen Drugs, Fosset and Flame, Milky Way, Flowers by Sandy, Donaldson's, et cetera. And in fact, we talked our daughter into, who lives in Avon, to use vendors from Lebanon for her wedding in Indianapolis, okay? And we, it was a wonderful, wonderful wedding, and it took place at the zoo. But the vendors from here took wonderful care of my daughter and our family. We even used the Kraken House for her bridal shower. We have a lot of gems in our community, and I know that the city council wants our city life to improve, to move in the positive direction. So, I'm asking that the council approve the ordnance and show support for the mission that is stated on this website. And the mission says, "By enacting legislation that fosters the health, safety, and welfare of the city, and the council works to represent the interests of residents while ensuring the delivery of municipal services." So, please vote in support of this business, this family, and the others who've purchased property in Lebanon. Thank you.
Any other who'd like to speak?
My name's Adam Dickerson, 714 Indianapolis Avenue. First, I'd like to thank the Richards. They have a great small business. They are an asset to this community, and I love the food just as much as everybody else does. But that's not why we're here. We're not here because of how good a people they are. We're here because of this alley. It has nothing to do with how great they are. We say that they're paying taxes on this land, okay? Well, I'm sorry about that. If I paid taxes up on that courthouse for long enough, do I get it? What's this land worth? Not what we're paying taxes on. In the end, what is it worth? Because we're giving it away. Second of all, to the younger gentleman, you were saying how it was a safety thing, walking back there. Well, originally, I don't know how old you are, originally, all the Milky Way's employees would park on the north side of the property. There used to be an ice machine there, and there used to be a telephone booth there, and that's where they parked. Now, if you wanted to get back there to their nice little picnic area, you would park, you would walk across that alley, and then you could go there. That's what my mom did with me all the time when I was a little bitty kid. I just find this really strange that these people could close this alley off and put a chain across it when we say the city owns it. But if I did that on my alley, I, I have this bad feeling that I might be in trouble. But I don't see how, I don't see why we can't come to some sort of compromise here. There ought to be a way that we can work together and make each other happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Any further, further public testimony?
Good evening. My name is Gordon Perry. I'm a resident at 610 North Meridian Street. Some of you will recognize me as also a Planning Commission member for the city of Lebanon. I am not here on behalf of the Planning Commission. I'm here on behalf of being a resident for the city, of the city of Lebanon. I appreciate your time, Mayor. I appreciate your time, council. I have spent, since being, since being appointed to the Plan Commission, I have spent enormous amounts of my time researching this vacation request. Why? Because I'm a licensed professional land surveyor in the state of Indiana, in Illinois, and the state of Texas. Each year, I do about 30 hours of continuing education to stay current, to keep those licenses current. And most of that continuing education deals with property law, which I have practiced for more than 30 years. I have been adamantly opposed to this vacation request. I find Mr. Whitsett's comments that he opened with very interesting, in they, the Richards thought they owned the property. That is the worst assumption you can make when you're buying property. Those words in a deed, and every deed that dates back to 1965, there are legal precedents two blocks away in the county courthouse that will show you those words mean absolutely There is a ton of technical points that I could make here that would expand well beyond the five minutes. You know, the Richards, sounds like they run a great business. It's great for the community and that. But the previous gentleman speaking, we're not talking about the business. We're talking about city assets. We're talking about property, something that I specialize in. After reviewing this, after the Plan Commission, I have spent a great deal of time with city staff, with Rachel, with Derek, with Christie. I have talked to property attorneys. I have talked to nationally resound land surveyors such as Gary Kent of the Schneider Corporation. There is a ton of legal precedents to say no to this, to this vacation request. It is against my professional ethics to say, let's, let's fight this. But as a resident of the city of Lebanon, I urge you to strongly consider this motion in front of you. Because we, as a city, don't need to be spending exorbitant amounts of money and additional time to chase this down. Technically, it's wrong. We have lots of other things to do, to get to, to improve our city. And I have come, myself, I have come to the realization that in working with staff and in talking to some of you, and to talking to you, Mr. Mayor, there are things we, we need to learn from this. We need to take this painful, painful step forward and accept this. Put together the commission so that we can start addressing other vacation requests that are going to come up and handle them correctly. Professionally, I, I just can't get behind this, but as a resident of the city, I can because I want to see us move forward. I don't want to see us miss the opportunity to do other good things because we've spent all our time and resources chasing this one thing. I greatly appreciate your time. I will tell you again that I would be in favor of the motion that's in front of you. It's taken me a long time to get there, and I apologize to those who have spoken in behalf of owning property there, the hardships that they will face. I'm hoping that we, as a city, can find answers to help those problems. But this isn't about a great business and all the other things.
Just to clarify, Gordon, you are, you are suggesting the council they should vote in favor of-
I'm in favor of this to move us forward.
Okay. Thank you, Gordon. I appreciate that.
I appreciate your time this evening.
Any other, for the public comment? Yes, sir.
Steve Dickerson, 714 Indianapolis Avenue. In reference to the driveway to Green Street, from the building, it crosses someone else's land. So, you know, I just think I stayed this the last time we was here. If they, if he sells that land, put up storage buildings or something, that driveway won't exist. It'll be back out on the avenue, you know? But they have it in and out, the Milky Way does. They have it a drive-in, a drive-out. We just want to drive in or drive out, looking for a compromise, you know, make something happen, you know, besides just make it a dead end.
The issue is that there aren't, there won't be two points of entry or exit currently. I mean, there, the, the southern access point of the alley has already been vacated, so there is no southern access point.
Excuse me?
There's, there is no exit. I mean, you could exit through their property, but there wouldn't be no southern access point on the alley. You're talking about in and out. It's- It's already a one-way.
I don't understand what you're saying.
I apologize.
My address is 714 Indianapolis Avenue. I got a mailbox out there, and I got a path, supposed to be an alley leading back to the building. I pay the same taxes they pay, property taxes, you know? And what kind of business could I open there if you can't get in and out? They come and passed the holes last week in the alley. They pulled up in the lady's yard and backed up in mine to get the box turned around to get out. Nobody's gonna get out and take a chain down, you know, when they don't have to. They're just jockeying around and tearing up everybody's property. You know, there needs to be a way in and a way out. I cannot see that, you know, why there couldn't be a compromise there somehow. That's about all I got.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Any further public comment?
May I respond? There are safety concerns on both sides, and that's the problem. The reason that the Richards thought that they needed to block this off is because customers and employees were running the risk of traffic that was using their parking area as a public way. And it hadn't been used as a public way for a long time. It is a parking lot adjacent to their business. I take issue with the fact that deeds don't mean anything, and the language in deeds don't mean anything. They certainly mean something. And also of significance is the fact that, as I mentioned to you last time, when the Richards wanted to expand their building north, they came to this city and asked for permission, for a building permit. We know now that the building is on what was once platted as Green Street. It encroaches on it. But when they came and asked for a building permit from the city, there was no objection to that at all. And the permit was granted, and the building expanded. There are errors that are made with regard to real estate, and anybody that deals with real estate very much, as Mr. Perry undoubtedly has, realizes that things as platted are not always built. Things as surveyed are sometimes subject to question. I've been in front of this council before vacating alleys, and they've been vacated. And this is an appropriate request to do this. I am, you know, it's unfortunate if you have crossway traffic on the access to these three properties. There's three residences, and most of them gain the access to the back of their buildings through the alley that's north of them. And I understand that if you have two cars, one coming in and one going out, that you might have a problem. But you do that almost anywhere when you're going in and out of the Milky Way, too. You can't have, you know, they try to route their traffic around their building so you don't have cars coming in and out at the same place. And it's gonna require, as more congestion is along Indianapolis Avenue, more care for both the patrons and the employees of the Milky Way and the residents there. But denying this request will not solve that safety concern. In fact, it would increase safety risks for the patrons and the employees of Milky Way. And as been pointed out, when this thing started in front of the plan commission at the very beginning, the proposal was, "Let's have this alley open because it'll come, people can come in, go behind their houses, and then go all the way south to Jerry's Feed and Salt and go on Indianapolis Avenue." And then, through more investigation, they determined, "Wait a minute, we can't do that." Why? Because the alley by Jerry's Feed and Salt was vacated a long time ago. The problem was that when it was vacated, the vacation ordinance wasn't recorded, so that wasn't picked up. Those are the kind of errors that happen. It also apparently happened way back in 1965, when people started conveying Green Street, now vacated but as platted. Well, it's hard to go back. Fortunately, Jerry is still alive, and he can find his ordinance and say, "Here it is, people, and now I'm gonna walk over to the courthouse and record it." We really can't go back to 1965 very well and find out from Ruth and Earl Hicks, who conveyed the property, what they did when they got Green Street vacated. But they felt comfortable signing a deed conveying Green Street to the new owners, to the Stukies. But we can't go back now and say, "What happened to that thing that the city passed vacating Green Street?" Because we can't record it now. But it's clear that it's been recognized as being vacated for decades. And what we're doing is asking you, and these people that are here in support of Milky Way are asking you to support this ordinance.
Thank you, Tom. Any final public comments?
Again, my name's Dan Allen, 1710 Indianapolis Avenue. You just stated that the south end has been vacated, so there is no way out. You don't give them Green Street. There's a way out. Why don't we just share it? It's no parking, and where the Green Street is, they can still come in, use it as a street, they can park both sides of it, still maintain their business, and we still get a way out if you give it to them. Granted, he says they have it. It's on deeds. You show it to me. Back in 1965, where it was vacated, you show me the proof. They have to prove they have it. I don't have to prove it. But I'm willing to compromise so I have a way out. They can still have it. They can still use it as a parking lot. They don't park in the middle of that. It's not gonna adhere or change any of their parking, other than maybe three parking spots where they park in front of the chain. So if an emergency vehicle needed to get in there, they couldn't get in there. And if you would like to see the photographs of that, I would gladly show you. There's vehicles parked in front of that chain, so an emergency vehicle couldn't get through there. You'd have to try and find them to move it, or hook a wrecker and haul them out of the way. By then, whoever is going to either be dead, or their place is gonna be burnt to the ground.
Thank you, Sean. With that, we'll end the public hearing portion of the meeting. And then, we have a... Attorney Shine, if you wanted to explain where we are in the process for this ordinance?
Yes, Mayor and council. As you know, we had first reading of ordinance 2016-02 on the April 11th meeting. This is second reading, following the public hearing. Again, I won't, as I did on April 11th, I won't read the ordinance verbatim.
Thank you.
I'll spare you a little bit of that. But in summary, again, this is a vacation request of Green Street and certain portions of the alley. Just, I want to bring to your attention, you've received this, you have them in the legal descriptions, but as a condition here, what we're talking about is a vacation of the Green Street that is set forth in Exhibit A, which was attached to the ordinance. We also have portions of the alley that are described in Exhibits B1 and B2 as... Conditions of those. We also have the fact that prior to this vacation ordinance becoming effective, it is conditions upon the following that Brian and these two Richards would dedicate the vacated Green Street and subscribe to Patchment A. A non-exclusive drainage and utility easement in favor of and for the benefit of the city of Lebanon and all public utilities. That is also a condition as it relates to the vacated portions of the alley, and those are Exhibits B1 and B2. So those are, again, just to reiterate, conditioned upon this vacation ordinance becoming effective. Additionally, as has been previously attached on Attachment C, there's gonna be, Ron Smith will dedicate the vacated portion of the alley, a non-exclusive drainage and utility easement in favor of and for the benefit of the city of Lebanon and all public utilities. There's also a further conveyance that will be in Attachment C, or D, I'm sorry, and that's gonna relate to the portion just south of the Milky Way. Once all those easements are finalized and approved, then a deed would be drawn that would reiterate the same. And it's only upon those conditions that this vacation ordinance would become effective. So with that, that's second reading.
Thank you. Is there any discussion for the council, or questions for Derek to clarify anything for you guys? Yes, Dave?
I'd like to ask Fire Chief a question. Chief Bass, when you're gonna fight a fire back there in any of those garages back to the alley, how are you gonna get back to there?
We're gonna lay yard lays from Indianapolis Avenue. We try to avoid alleys for many different reasons. They're just not set up for fire trucks. We try to adjust to collapse zones. So we will set up on Indianapolis Avenue, and we'll run a two-and-a-half-inch yard lay back to whatever structure that we can't get to.
Okay, so if we have an ambulance or whatever has to get, if it has to get to the back of the building, they still got the alley to get to there, correct?
Yes.
Okay. My only other comment is, it's a shame there's a lot of problems with this whole vacation. A whole lot of issues that date way, I'll say, date way back. Yeah, we got some deeds that show vacation, but we don't have a record that tells us when Green Street was vacated. We also find out we have a building that's partially on the Green Street survey, where Green Street should have been, and where a permit somewhere from the city years ago was given and permission to extend to there, probably thinking that Green Street was vacated. So there's just a lot of little issues with this whole thing that, yeah, we need to clean it up one way or the other. I have one concern myself, and I just got involved recently, but I've been watching it for a couple months, and went out and looked at it about three or four times. But one thing really bothered me, that there was a chain across the alley that closed the alley, and the alley was not closed. The alley was not vacated. And someone had put a chain across the alley, and it really should not have been there. And that really kind of bothered me that that was there. The other thing that kind of bothers me, as we talk about safety and kids walking across the parking lot, we have those issues at every restaurant in Lebanon. So I don't want, you know, I don't want you, they're problems. I agree, they're problems. But do understand, they are like that at every restaurant in Lebanon, Indiana. Every restaurant in every community across the United States. When you have to walk across the parking lot with little kids and traffic coming in and out is a problem. You'll never get away with that problem. So I just don't want people using a safety thing by children walking across. It's a problem everywhere, at every business here in Lebanon today. I'm telling you. And ice cream places, to me, really are a real big problem because kids grab their ice cream, they run through the cars, and they want to go over to the playground and things like that. And you have to be very careful around ice cream parks, and I agree. It's not, every business in town that has a parking and a drive around it has that issue. So it's something that needs to be cleaned up. I'm not sure what the right way is gonna be to do that.
Look at it, and you're on the committee deck, so I'm sure you'll get it straightened out for us, right?
Oh, thanks.
Yeah. Any other discussion, questions, comment from the council?
Real quick, just Larry, whatever happens on the vote, can we get somebody out to look at that manhole cover near Indianapolis Avenue, right? In the alley?
Indianapolis Avenue right into the...
Just take a look at it, see what it's, it's in the alley, so...
It is in the alley. It's a sanitary sewer, so we'll check it out.
Yeah, just see.
Any further discussions, comments from the council?
I just wanted to say that it's been an interesting process. I know it's been painful for all sides and all involved parties. It's my opinion that the deed should have been, the vacation should have been recorded back in 1965. There was an error in that. But I also believe that the city had an error when the building permit was given back to add, put a building on Green Street. It's been extremely, just several different errors through the past, and I'm glad that the council is gonna start looking at vacation process for the future. With that, I would make the motion to approve the vacation ordinance 2016-02.
We have a motion to approve. Motion is second. Call the roll. Madam Chair?
Counselman K. K., you second it. Counselman Campbell? Counselman Coop?
Yes.
Counselman Robertson?
No.
Counselman Copeland? Okay. We'll come back to you. Counselman Lamar is a yes.
Yes.
Because he made the motion. Counselman Fleming?
I want to say, too, this has been a painful process for everybody, and we need to clean this, fix it. I mean, feels like I've been on this council, we've been dealing with issues from the past since I've been here, and, you know, when I ran, we wanted to make it better as we moved forward. So we need to move on, and I'm voting yes.
Counselman Copeland?
Yes.
Okay. It passes.
Final vote is five to two?
Yes.
Okay. Vacation ordinance 2016-02 passes five to two. Thank you for your patience. Okay, on to new business, unless there's any other old business coming before the council? No? Okay. With that new business, we have a State of the Utilities presentation by Mike Whitman. I know it's a tough act to follow, Mike, but I'm sure you'll be up to task. Yeah, this is interesting, guys.
Is this one tell them about the 30% rate increase?
A little easier for you, Mike.
Excuse me?
That got a little easier for you, I think. Do, just did.
Good evening. My name is Mike Whitman. I'm general manager of Lebanon Utilities. I wish to present a projection of our rates for our electric, water, and wastewater utilities. The purpose of utility rates is to provide funds to operate the utility. Rates and charges should recover enough revenue to provide for statutory revenue requirements, which I will cover in more detail in a moment. Our rate strategy is always looking out for our rate payers, attempting to keep our rate adjustments in the single digits. No more than one rate adjustment in a year, considering all utilities. Gain council concurrence on a rate adjustment prior to conducting a rate study. This keeps Lebanon Utilities from conducting a... time period. For the water utility, proposed 2016 capital expenditures are approximately $1.5 million. We have several projects that we are undertaking this year, and those are listed for you. Our proposed water utility capital projects, 2017 through 2021, total nearly $6 million. Those projects are listed. For 2016, projected revenue and depreciation to put forward towards capital is $818,000. Projected capital outlay is $1.5 million, mentioned a moment ago. A rate adjustment will be needed unless reserves are used this year. If using reserves, this would reduce our reserves by $628,000. The sooner a rate adjustment is analyzed and put into place, the smaller the impact it will have on customers. For next year, projected revenue and depreciation to put towards capital is $747,000. Projected capital outlay is $2.6 million. A rate adjustment will be needed if not done this year. If a rate adjustment is not done prior to 2017, we could deplete our reserves by over 60%. Rate adjustments take time to build up enough resources to be used for capital improvements. Our recommendation, Lebanon Utilities needs to bring in Umba and Associates to perform a water rate study. This study will cost approximately $35,000 to $40,000. We would like for council to concur with a rate adjustment should it be found necessary in the study. This adjustment is hoped to be in the single digits if we do not put it off further. The wastewater utility, projected rate adjustments 2016, 2021, based on current projections of revenues and expenses, along with the current projection of capital projects, we do not project a rate adjustment during this time period. Are there questions?
I have one.
Yes, Mike.
Ben, sir.
You want it? Go ahead, Mike. Yeah, go ahead.
This is a continuance of what Jay started back in 2015, in the late summer of 2015.
Well, it's possible. I guess I don't know, Mike. I don't know. I know that we realized the latter part of last year, that we needed to come to the council and talk about a rate adjustment for the water utility, if that answers your question.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Can we go back two slides?
This one?
Yes. Actually, looking at your reserves, how much are in the reserves if we're going to have to use them in some way?
Excuse me?
Said a rate adjustment would be needed unless reserves are used. How much are we looking at in reserves at this current point?
I think right now about a million and a half, but I'd have to check on that to be, to confirm.
And how long will those reserves get us through?
Until next year.
Okay.
At that point, we'll have no reserves, and then we'll not be able to have capital projects in the water utility. We'll have no money to use for capital projects.
My question would be too, I mean, how long have we known that we're going to need to do a rate increase at some point down the road?
For water?
Yes.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
No, that was not my question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, my question was, oh, my question was, how long have we known that we might have to do a rate increase in water? Was this projected five years ago, three years ago, just somewhere along that line?
Oh, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. I can try to find out, Dan, but I, that was before I was born around here.
No, I understand. I'm just trying to, you know, figure out, you know, what we need to do in the future, how far we're projecting out. That way, we're not caught off guard with it. Like, I don't know, last year's council, when you guys did the increase, I don't know how much notice you guys had on it, but we definitely want to project farther out if something's going to have to happen, so.
That's why we asked the utilities to come, start coming each year and doing this proposal, so we could be on the same page, and then they would let us know what they're looking at for the future and things of that nature.
That's fantastic. That's what I'm looking for, so.
Perfect. Mike Martin, Mike Martin had given us a presentation about what was going to be needed in the future. He retired, and Jay McCoskey got the job, and he was putting things together. He had shown us some projections, and then he got another job and left.
Yeah.
And so Mike was the interim person for a few months, and now, two weeks ago, was hired as a full-time general manager, and he's picking it up again. So we've known about it, it's just due to circumstances, we're at where we're at. So it's nothing, it's not a big surprise.
Didn't we do a 30% increase last year? That was, or was it 42 and it was going to be 30? It was either 42 and going to be 30, or 30 and going to be 21, but because of the pilot, we.
Right, and the pilot still has to be addressed. I'm assuming that the utilities, it's on their agenda to come back to the council. Okay.
Okay. Perfect. Perfect. That, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mike, that was just my question on that at this point, so.
Okay. Okay.
So Mike, of the 1.5 million reserve you think we have there, we're currently this year going to spend about $628,000 of that. That's correct. And that's all towards capital projects? That's correct. That are going currently? Yes, that is correct. Or being planned. Okay, be roundabout.
And you're not looking for approval tonight, or are you, that's for later, correct?
No, we're not. We're just looking for council concurrence that we ought to go ahead and spend the money for a rate study, and that if that rate study suggests a rate increase later this year, that we can hope for council support for that increase. Otherwise, we've spent a lot of money unnecessarily.
Do you know when the last time they did perform a wastewater rate study was?
I do not.
Okay.
And then just a separate item, if I may, unless there are further questions?
Yeah. Any further questions from the council?
So are you wanting us to vote on something?
No, he's not. He's just presenting state of utilities.
As a separate item, with regards to payment in lieu of tax, in the next couple of months, Lebanon Utilities would like to meet with the mayor and council to continue discussing the Lebanon Utility Payment in Lieu of Tax. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Question on that, which one are you talking about? In all three of them, or just the wastewater?
Yes.
Guess what?
All three of them.
Did you do a study on all three?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about payment in lieu of tax.
Yeah.
Oh, no, the rate study is just for the water utility.
Right. Just for the water, for the pilot, right? On the water department only, right? Is that what you're asking?
Right.
Pilot, for the water only?
Pilot.
For all three?
That's two separate topics. Yes. Yeah, I'm presenting just two separate topics. So for the three utilities, we would ask concurrence for the water rate study. But yet, for the conversation regards pilot, that would include all of the utilities.
But you want our, I'll say blessing, to move forward with a rate study for water?
For the water utility.
Because, I mean, you don't know what you're going to need unless you do a study.
That's correct.
So, and if we don't, if we don't.
But not tonight?
Well, he's, he's.
You're not seeing council approval tonight, are you?
Not necessarily.
Oh, okay.
Not necessarily. But the sooner we begin the study, council agrees.
Do you know how long the studies take to perform?
Oh, I would, I don't know, but I would guess it will take three to four months. But I don't know for sure.
I mean, there's no harm in us, if we believe they need to do the rate stats, to do the study, there's no harm in us of giving them the blessing to go ahead and do the study, because we don't know what it's going to be unless they do a study. And they can't raise the rate.
Well, if they do a study, it's $30,000. They do a study, it's minimum $30,000, so.
Yeah.
How did you, how did you select Umba?
They've been doing these kinds of things for us for a long time. So as far as how they started a business relationship with us, I don't know.
Are there other firms that perform it as well?
I suspect there are. I don't know that, but I suspect so.
Any other questions?
Sure that if we do a study, we make sure we get it for the cheapest price we could possibly get the study, if we even need the study, right? I mean.
Well, we have to have a study to raise the rate, you have to have a study.
We can, we can talk about whether.
Reason rates, anyway.
Tonight, we're just talking about the presentation of it. We can talk about the details, and if we want to concur with the, to go forward with the study later. We don't need to take action tonight, so.
Okay.
Anything else, Mike? Anything else from the council?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay. Yes, just state of utilities. Okay. Mr. Warren, I'd like to step back up here. I'm sure you're a happy man right now.
Thrilled to be able to move on.
Yeah.
So, this is, I'll make this short and sweet, I'm not asking for any action. This is just kind of an introduction to a problem that we, oops, have come across. One might argue that it's a good problem. The subdivision going in north of Chadwick, Auburn Meadows, has had an explosion, we'll call it, of residential building. And there's also been a explosion of debris and trash floating around into neighboring properties, because there is no responsible way, I'll call it, of handling that debris right now. Currently, the builders take it out to the curb and pile it up, and one of their trash crews come around every so often and pick it up. And the more and more we get into development, and the more and more this development pushes out the city limits, we're into areas of town where it's often windy all the time. Some things are freak of nature that you're not going to be able to control, but I do see a gap that I think we can fill with everyday type of construction trash that happens on a site. We do not have any ordinances or codes on the book right now that address having to have a container on site for new construction. So what this city code that I am proposing does is, several things were thrown in here, but the main one is the solid waste.
And just to clarify, Derek, there's no action tonight. Again, this is just the beginning of a discussion. We may have an ordinance down the road. This is not.
That's correct. The city code here addresses several things, dust control, solid waste, grading and drainage, weeds, and portable toilets. The two things we're getting the most complaints on right now is trash blowing around, because there is not any requirements for a container on site. And also, construction workers using whatever they can find to relieve themselves instead of a proper facility. So that's why the portable toilets is in there. So, you know, this isn't, I'm not reinventing the wheel here. I researched this and found many other communities across the United States that are, have this type of ordinance on the, or city code on the books. And I just took the most simplistic approach to it and tweaked it to fit our city code. And the reason I'd like to introduce it into the city code versus the unified development ordinance is, this gives us a little bit more immediate reaction to the problem. Versus the UDO, the enforcement action is a 14-day warning citation, then a 14-day fee citation, and then if they don't comply with that, we have to drag them into court and all kinds of crazy stuff. So the city code has a enforcement section built into this Section 92, which, Section 92 in general is buildings and building regulations. So that's why I chose Section 92 to introduce this code into. And you can see, the enforcement is identified already in Section 92 as well, and fines here, there's some other things in the enforcement, but fines specifically, not less than $10 and not more than $100 each day of the violation. So our intentions would be to adopt this into the city code. We would then hand this out as a requirement with any new building permit that's issued in the city. And mainly to, again, require a container on site, so that we can deal with trash in a better manner than what we have now, which is no way really to deal with it.
Thank you, Derek.
I have a question for you, Derek.
Sure, Keith. Sorry.
The, I agree with everything you have, except for what you wrote at the bottom. The $10, that's a joke.
Oh, well, yeah, we'd be, we'd be on the not more than 100 side.
I'm there.
Yep.
Because I'm telling.
You just cited what currently is in the code.
I understand. We need to look at that, because the $10 is not going to cost one of those guys a second.
No, right.
So we have to get them to where it hurts, where it makes them feel they have to do it first.
Right, I don't disagree with that.
If they don't do it, they ought to pay for it.
Yep, yep.
So what about a stop work order, or something like that?
That might be a possibility. We'd have to tweak the penalty section of that to include it, but it'd be something to consider.
We could look at like a habitual portion for a developer.
Yeah, the repeat offender act or something like that, yeah, which is a whole nother issue. But, yeah, we do have that quite often.
And this is why we brought this up, because we think there's a lot of benefit, that you guys are curious of, interested of ideas of to start addressing this issue. This, I mean, as we see more growth development, this will become more and more of an issue to have. So have those conversations with Derek, we can put together an ordinance and figure out what we want to say.
Toilet you need per person.
Pardon, just one. One more slide. Okay, all right.
Rob and I will work on this, and we'll bring it back to you for an official adoption, if everyone's comfortable with me moving forward on that to solve this problem.
Thank you, council.
Yep.
Is there any other new business to come before the council? Okay, with that, let's move on to claims. I would entertain a motion.
Motion, we play the claims?
Motion to pay the claims. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Mayor Ibsen.
Oh, that's right, thank you, I apologize. Councilman Lamar Ibsens, he's on the claims. Thank you for reminding me, Jeremy. Okay, and then with that, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
We adjourn?
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you very much, we are adjourned.